All right, good evening. Welcome to the November 25th meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
JRTs.
Here.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone has had a chance to review the consent agenda, does anyone like to have anything removed? If not, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mr. Peterson, roll call please.
JRTs.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
All right, and next up, we have our service awards. And first up, from the Water Department, Dustin Long with 10 years.
Can we move into the second one? He's on his way outside the building.
So first up is Larry Moore with the Street Department with 10 years.
Mayor and Council, good evening. It's really hard to believe that Larry has been here for 10 years now. Time really goes by quick when you enjoy working with someone. Larry has been instrumental over the years in teaching some of our newer hires, some of the finer aspects of construction work. Larry's experiences and time spent in the construction field are absolutely priceless to the Street Department. I'm really grateful to have him and I hope he sticks around for a few more years. Thank you.
May I go really slow on this picture? Oh yeah, he's not here. I can't see back there. I'll take it with him another time. I will talk really slow. While we're waiting, I will say that there was, I believe, a little small mix-up on scheduling and our presentation tonight with Navigate. I believe we're going to move to another day, correct?
Yeah.
That'd be a good first of the year thing.
Do what? Say nice things to him all the time.
I think I just saw headlights, so.
He's probably got the wife and their baby with him, so I'm sure he's running behind. Mayor and Council, good evening.
Well, if his wife and family is with him, hold on a second.
Well.
How's your day been?
It's been good, how's yours?
Not bad.
Have you all looked to the east and seen the new water tower painting out there? We have painted the tower out there at High Point School, got the eagle on the west side and the Nixa Utility logo on the...
Yep.
On the east side, and they should be done tomorrow, painting the top of it, and we should be done with that little project, so.
Perfect, yeah, looks good.
Looks good.
Looks real good.
We're good? There he is.
So, I stand corrected, he didn't bring the wife and baby with him, but anyway.
That was totally worth it, though.
Dustin's been with us for 10 years, of course. He came from the city of Willard, where he worked in water and wastewater over there. Dustin started his career with us as a utility worker and he has worked up to lead operator now. He is, he was running the distribution crew out there, taking care of the water leaks and stuff like that. We've moved him up to taking care of the wells and the sampling and the SCADA system. He does a great job. I hate to say this, he's usually on time. No, Dustin, I can't, the city couldn't hardly function without him, really. He's, he goes above, beyond, I can call him in the middle of the night, he's there. Just a great employee and wealth of knowledge and I appreciate all the things he's done for us and that's about it, so.
Always love when the service awards have something to do with public works because I know how much those guys love getting up here and talking. I appreciate your guys' service, thank you very much. All right. If you don't have the presentation, I will go ahead and open up the visitors section. Do we have anyone signed up?
Sean Ingersson.
I'm Sean Ingersson, I live on 808 East Scott Wayne Drive. I wanted to bring attention to the Flock cameras that we have around Nixa. I understand what they're there for and I know that they're there to help with the policing, but I think the amount of vulnerabilities that these cameras have security-wise are not worth the risk to have them up anyways. These cameras have a simple button on the back that you press three times, it turns on basically an access point that you can connect to. Once you get in there, in one of those 47 ways, it's running Android 8 and 8.1, which is, hasn't been updated since 2021 and has over 900 vulnerabilities listed. Sorry. A little nervous, never done this before. So, with that being said, once they are in the camera, they can do whatever they want with the footage, the software. Because it's basically a mobile phone software running on a camera that's been around since forever, so the knowledge to navigate this and circumvent all security is pretty simple and easy. There are 900 listed, I don't know if I said that or not. Along with that, Flock itself as a company has constantly found itself lying and manipulating data on whether or not Flock actually does contribute to solving crimes and the crime rate. They've been caught using data from years prior, the cameras were put up, and then claiming that they had something to do with the crime rate going down, even though on a national average right now, we do see it going down. Oh, sorry. So, you can't rely on the data that they give us. These cameras are extremely vulnerable. Any, I mean, it's basically the three biggest engineers that are involved with researching this right now have said that basically a 12-year-old can get into the camera if they were interested. Because once you have that data and that software, you can send that video footage to your own private server. We've seen this being accessed by, I know it sounds weird in a small town, but like Chinese hacker, hacking groups that are taking down, sorry, they're taking down... Our ARC, I think it's called ARCSEC, which has to do with like the response time of emergency services and like... Wow, I'm drawing a blank. And like, say like the power goes out, like the storm that we had last year, the year before, I can't remember. That took out a lot of power in Nixa, so it can affect things like that. I'm here mainly on the behalf of all the people that did message me after I brought note to this on like the Nixa Community Facebook group. It got really hostile, I don't know why, but people didn't want to deal with the other people in the comments, so I had plenty of people messaging me asking, you know, for more info and then having their support and coming to this and trying to bring attention to it. There's just a lot of lies that Flock uses, like they try to claim Jack's Grafton was a trans man who got shot and killed and the body was never recovered. And he was taken from Denver to another town and then Flock claimed that that was solved, that was never solved, the crime was never found. The mother, she speaks out against it all the time. Flock's been caught selling their data services within stores, so not only are they tracking driving behaviors of citizens, but they're now tracking shopping habits and things like that for like digital pricing, so they can change the pricing on people based on their shopping habits. Kind of went through my notes a lot faster than I thought. There is a current organization called DFlock and their website is dflock.me where you can see the locations of the Flock cameras, which is how my attention is drawn to the ones in Nixa. They've had several cease and desist and Flock is very much against the education and information being out on what exactly they are, how they work. They do seem to refuse to fix any of these bugs and errors as well. Joshua Michael, who is one of the engineers, and then John Gainesek Gaines, he has a company called Gainesek. Both of them have brought the attention to Flock as well and Flock did not give any sort of word that they had fixed any of these bugs, patched anything, and it has been months and that is the only reason this is being given to the public, otherwise they wouldn't have, if they had fixed it. And I have a last little section here, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So, part of the, because I do have a bit of a background in website design, so web design, the actual coding process of it. So when you are trying to look into the effectiveness of Flock, the way websites work for search engines is they do have things working in the background, so Flock will be dominant no matter how you try to look it up, so anything... And sort of in the effectiveness range of it, will you be able to find any negative things about Flock? You do have to look at like the white papers by John Gainesek. Other government facilities, there was a police department, trying to find which one it was. Oh, Berkeley Police Economy Board. They also looked into it and then, and if anything, they saw a rise in crime from these cameras, there was essentially zero return that they found. Flock's, you know, again, they cite data from years prior, the cameras installation. Another big issue I do see as a citizen of Nixa is the fact that Flock does not allow ownership. They only lease these cameras to us, which costs, you know, thousands of dollars a year per camera. They don't really have a way to update security on these devices. I don't know if Nixa does have it, but two FA, to, for the officers to log into Flock. I know that there is a huge findings of, there's no two FA for these officers to log in. I guess one more thing that I put here, sorry. An API key was also found on their website, on a demo site, that one that Joshua Michael had found. And the API allowed him access to all of Flock's systems nationally. So, not only was it compromising to the citizens, but it was also compromising to the officers. He could see the address, houses, or the, I'm sorry, the addresses, phone numbers. In some cases, socials of the officers as well, he could see exact location of the officers, you could see every, every vehicle included on the hot list, I believe is what it's called. In some areas, so there is, he could see thousands and thousands of vehicles, exactly where they were, at what time they were flagged, what camera caught it. There is zero evidence of this footage actually being encrypted because they've gotten their hands on their own Flock cameras, so there's no encryption on these devices. And another claim that they have is that they are deleted after seven days, that is not true at all. They actually found footage of the motion going off in the factory when they were putting the cameras together, so you can see people putting the like faceplates on the cameras as well. I believe, I have more names if you are interested as well and other things that I can quote here. But overall, I just don't think the security risk is worth, you know, the citizens and my own belief, their privacy. I, again, like the most common thing I've seen is like, you know, if you're not doing anything wrong, then why does it matter? I mean, I've worked in IT most of my working life, even if I get a computer that I have access to, I'm not going to look at anything, I believe a right to privacy is right. But yeah, I just wanted to bring attention to the dangers that Flock can have over a community and a state as well. Just, sorry, I have the name of the city that is currently dealing with hundreds of thousands of dollars from fines from Flock for trying to just cover up the cameras because they terminated their contract with them. But since they don't own the cameras, they weren't allowed to remove them and they kept them up because other agencies have access to them as well as like government agencies, so they would re, they did not allow the time to take them down. They fined them every time they tried to take them down or cover them up. And it's in Illinois. Sorry. I know I wrote it down, but I can't find that right now, sorry about that.
If you find it, feel free to shoot it to me in an email.
Okay.
Actually, I had someone reach out to me about these and asked what kind of review we do. And I know that, you know, anytime our contract's up, we do a full review of the contract and with this, we'll also have our, kind of the cybersecurity team on our IT that we use look into it as well.
Yeah, I can forward you all of the papers, all of the articles, the current congressional investigation that's going on with Flock as well. I do have all the PDFs and screenshots of all that, too.
Yeah, if you don't mind, please do that.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ingersson. And tell your family I said hello. I've known them since I moved to Nixa pretty much, I think. Yep.
Ron Sanders.
Well, I have not been here forever. I'm Ron Sanders, 976 Cologne Oak Strive, and tonight I want to talk about lawfare, okay? Let me start out by saying, a lot of our court systems have been abused lately and we see a lot in the news, seems to be way up high, 30,000 foot, you know, federal government doing this, Congress doing that, blah, 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 right? Well, stuff that happens way up there ends up starting to happen at local, more local levels. I have two examples. Some lady did something bad, she said a racial slur in a park at someone, at a little kid. And even though it's protected speech, they arrested her, put her in jail, they're putting it through the whole court system, despite at least 10 different Supreme Court rulings that I could find in a simple search saying she didn't do anything illegal. There was another situation where some, a group of Muslims were praying and a couple of jerks that are, happened to be Christians unfortunately, went and started eating bacon in front of them and started taunting them, you know, after their prayer was done and stuff. They arrested them and they're going to actually put them through the court systems on felonies for speech and for First Amendment-protected activities. Lawfare, okay? You may not, you know, you may beat the charges, but you're not going to beat the ride. We will punish you one way or another, using our system of government to make your life miserable because you did something we don't like. And I heard about something going on here that bothered me just as much in a newspaper article, and that was about the development of some property here in Nixa where they want to be annexed. However, it fell apart, it fell apart as a vote of the city council. And I guess they're threatening a lawsuit, or they're going to file a lawsuit, or they've already filed a lawsuit, and it got me to wondering, can we now use the courts to force our elected officials to vote a certain way? No, that is not how our system of government works and they are abusing our system to the point where it's going to break down. And it provides a privilege to people who have money to throw it away and try to coerce special favors from city councils and from planning and zoning by strong-arming them with the threat of lawfare. And it's disgusting and it's despicable. And I also wanted to come here and remind you that if something comes up in here, you do not have to second the motion. Heck, you don't even have to make the motion to bring it up to vote. If it dies in the process because of a lack of a second, then y'all have done your due diligence and y'all have done your job. And no court on this earth or in this nation should ever be able to come down and exert any type of force, financial or otherwise, on this city because you guys have done your due diligence and have done the correct thing by voting or not voting on something that's been brought to the city council. I can't say that strongly enough because everybody used to whine and complain about the yes factory. All the city councils ever do is just say yes to everything that comes up. And in the past four years or so, I've seen the city council talk to the people right here and tell everybody what's going on, give their real opinions and their real viewpoints on particular ordinances and particular resolutions that are coming forward, and then vote appropriately. And I've seen stuff get voted down and looking deeply into those situations, it's easy to understand why, because we have open communication. And now, people with money are going to run around, file frivolous lawsuits and try to shut you up because they don't like the outcomes, because it didn't benefit them, even though it wasn't good for the people of Nixa.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
George Williams.
I know, don't roll your eyes. So I did all the talking last time. What'd you find out? On Daisy's Imagination Station, all the screaming and the rocks being thrown in Carla's yard, she's so upset tonight, she's stressed, she can't even talk, so I'm talking for her. So what did you find out? Have you talked to Mrs. Hutton?
I have talked to her husband and I, I mean honestly, I told them, you know, if there's anything they can do to either watch more, you know, try to quiet them down some.
These rocks that were thrown in Carla's yard just today, that's seen what they can do to watch more and stop it? Oh, okay, well, hold on, we're going to pull this up. This was all morning and then this was at five o'clock this evening, between four and five o'clock, between four... This reverberates through our homes like you wouldn't, like I told you, we're prisoners in our own homes. We can't even have peace and quiet in our own homes. That's against the law, that's breaking, that's peace disturbance. That is, if I stood out there and screamed at them and threw stuff in their daycare yard, I would be criminally charged so fast. But then, they're allowed to do this. There's, there's officers that drop their children off over there. There's, I've seen officers, I've seen firemen, I've seen city utilities, I get it, it's a benefit to Nixa, but this has got something. What, I guess I'm asking the wrong questions. What power do you guys hold to stop this? Do you guys as a city council member, can you say, hey, we need this stopped and it's going to stopped? If you can only take them, you know, they don't let them out all day at Enman Elementary, do they? No, if you can't, if you can't stop it, then here, we're going to set some times for you, an hour in the morning and an hour in the evening. That way you're not driving these people insane over there. That way you're, I went to my doctor because my heart's starting to race now every time they're out there screaming. I let him listen to that and he's like, oh, you've got to be kidding me. I'm like, no, no, and so we're going to run more tests on my heart to see if I'm headed back into AFID because of all this. I mean, what, what power do you guys? Another solution that I thought of, I know money's tight, but a sound barrier wall, high enough to where they can't throw, there's balls all over their roof, high enough to where they can't throw stuff in Carla's yard like rocks and toys. And thick enough to where it's, I, I researched it, it'll cut down the sound by half. We probably won't even hear them if there was a, a sound barrier wall built right, tall enough, wide enough to where it's not coming around to our homes. That would solve everything, I think. So what do you guys, you know, the, help, help us find something to stop this. I'm not going through another summer of this, I'm not. And I can't afford to move. If you guys will buy my house and then put a down payment on another home, I will be gone, real quick. But I can't afford to move right now, or I would. So that means I'm stuck with waking up every Monday, dreading that it's Monday over a daycare. That's how I, my weekends are so peaceful, our weekends are peaceful and quiet. And we have that to look forward to every Monday through Friday. It's like, we dread it. We dread to be in our own homes because of it. You heard that? Does that sound like they're trying to tell them to be quiet? In fact, ever since I called the police and filed the report, they have gotten, it's like they got a green card. They're like, no one's gonna do anything to us. So it's gotten even worse. Carla can, can vouch for that, so. What, a, a wall maybe?
As far as what we're able to do, I'd, I'd have to have a conversation with my chief and legal counsel. But um, you know, when you get into something being built there, they don't own that property, so it would have to go through the, the landlord. Um, and that would be, I mean, an additional expense to the landlord. Maybe they would want to, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure who the landlord is on that, so.
Right.
Um, I will, Chief and Mr. Woodman, if you could think about this and maybe within the next day. I know we're going on, on break, so if you could put some thoughts into it by tomorrow, um. If you guys are here, I don't know, a lot of people leave for the holidays, so.
Right.
Um, but.
No rush, I mean.
Get some, I'll try to get something by midweek next week, yeah, by midweek next week, I think I could at least have. It might not be the answer you want to hear, but I'm, I'll.
Okay.
Tell you the truth.
You know, if, if, if they would just restrict the times, they don't have to be out there all day just because it's not. And during the winter, that was our peace and quiet time.
Yeah.
This winter, they're already starting out, uh-uh, we're not getting it this winter on every day. They, it was thirty-six degrees that one morning, they were out there screaming. And I contacted uh, Janet Barton with, with Department of Elementary and, and like, what in the world? She goes, well, they can be out there in thirty-six degree weather. I wouldn't want my kid out there shoved outside in thirty-six degree weather, but I fish tournaments. I know a lot of people, a lot of business owners, Chuck's one of my best friends, uh, the owner of cat, of, of Modern Outdoor and Tackle. Chuck has two um, rentals back there on Carlisle behind me and the first house. And he was, we were fishing last week on, on the lake and he, I was telling him about that and I played that video and he's like, just shut up, shut that thing off. Everyone that I play that for is like, shut it off, I don't want to hear that. I'm like, imagine what we're doing, what we're going through. And um, Chuck's like, well, when, me and Melissa lived there, it's his rental now, property. But when they lived there, they were throwing rocks clear, the, the fence was out further by the road. They were throwing rocks clear across the road into his yard. He went over and had a talk with them. I didn't even know this until last week. I've known Chuck for a long time. So this has been an ongoing thing for a long ti- and they weren't too concerned about the rocks being thrown over in Carla's yard, were they? So anyway, I would just appreciate it if you guys, please do something, because I can just see what this summer's gonna be like. If they're doing it right now, after I've called the police, after I've been to two city council meetings, it's gonna be a living nightmare, so. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually throwing it on my calendar right now for next Wednesday to follow up. Alright. Okay, we don't currently have anyone else signed up to speak in the visitor's section, but if you would like to speak, you can still do so. Um, just make sure you state your name and then fill out a visitor card. Alright, no one else, I will go ahead and close the visitor's section and thank you all for speaking. And Mr. Ingraham, we're pretty nice, you don't have to be nervous next time, you're good. You did a good job. No one is until you have to be, I guess. Alright, well, moving on to the ordinance section, first reading, uh, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven?
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa. Amending section four dash three of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of establishing specific hours when alcohol sales are prohibited. And opting out of section three eleven dash dot two oh two six RSMO. Mayor and Council, sec- chapter four of the city code currently governs when alcohol can be sold within the city limits. Section four point three currently defers to state law regarding the operating hours for those alcohol sales. Earlier this summer, the Missouri General Assembly enacted section three eleven dot two oh two six RSMO. Which tempor- temporarily allows a twenty-three hour a day alcohol sales um, for the FIFA World Cup that's coming to Kansas City. This bill would amend section four dash three of the city code to adopt a new section that would prohibit the hours of op- of liquor sales. Between one thirty AM and six AM. And it would also exercise the city's authority to opt out of the twenty-three hour a day liquor sales for the FIFA World Cup. Staff recommends approval.
Do you have any stores that are open twenty-four hours? I guess, well, Maverick, is that Maverick over there by you?
Yeah, that one's open twenty-four hours.
You know how many?
But it, it also will allow like restaurants and stuff like that to be open, that, some of them might adjust their business hours accordingly too, for, for this opportunity.
I, yeah, I kind of wonder on that, because I mean, most of them don't. Do any of them actually stay open until the cutoff anyway?
Hmm, yeah.
One thirty AM.
Who stays open till one thirty?
Well, well, none of them.
I was gonna say, I don't recall of any restaurant or place that stays open that late.
We might have a couple of the gas stations that would stay open.
Okay.
So that would be your, your package sales.
So why is staff recommending that um, we opt out of this?
I mean, you guys can, I think it would be a good idea to opt out of a twenty-three hour a day alcohol sales, just in case you do have.
Depends on the day. I'm just kidding.
I mean, that, that's staff's recommendation that we opt out of that, it would be a month long, it's like middle of June to middle of July.
That's why I'm asking why, why is staff recommending that we opt out of it?
But it, it would be a policy decision on council's part. But I do recommend that we put in the prohibited hours, we've currently fallen on state law or the statute. And if they choose to update this again for another random thing, we would already have established hours.
I mean, opting out would definitely take away some of the confusion for next year. I mean, cause it goes from what date to what date?
It's like June twen- nineteenth or twentieth through middle of July, through like July twentieth, I'd have to pull the exact dates.
So then after the closed date, we have to make sure everyone is back in compliance and.
Correct. Yeah, it's only, they only have authorized the twenty-three hours during FIFA and it's like, it's four weeks.
Mr. Ingraham, just to follow up on that, I, I would agree, I think it's gonna create more confusion if we don't opt out of it. Because now we're allowing twenty-three hours, so twenty-three, twenty, I can't talk tonight.
You'll get there, buddy.
Twenty-three hour, I'm not good at speaking. But um, anyway, we would, if we, if we were to adopt that as the state uh, has, it would create more confusion in the long run. Because then we'd have to turn right around and go back when that expires. And it makes, I understand it makes sense for the FIFA World Cup where that's going on and they're playing soccer all the time. We don't have that here in our community, so really I think it would create more confusion if we were to not opt out.
I agree with that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. I had a feeling you had something to say about this on Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, yeah. Well, on one hand, you would have to provide a little bit of public service announcement saying, hey. You know, we're gonna change the hours to sell alcohol for the next four weeks and we're gonna promote FIFA. And we're gonna make a big deal about it, but just remember that after these four weeks, it's going back to the way it was before. Or when everybody finds out that the rest of the state is doing this, you're gonna have to do a public service announcement saying, hey, guys. Everybody else in the state's doing it, but we're not gonna do it because we want to reduce confusion. We want to make sure that everybody, you know, kind of just goes with the status quo and we don't want to have to explain things later. Meanwhile, you're explaining things now about how things are gonna happen later anyways. So one way or another, you're gonna have to explain stuff. Or you're gonna get hit in the butt by not explaining anything, because it's gonna hap- it's gonna be confusing either way because of what the state is doing. So why not make it a positive with your PR and say, hey, uh, let's go ahead and roll with this. Let's make it a big deal about FIFA, make it a big deal about, hey, you can buy your alcohol for twenty-three hours at a time in Nixa. While supplies last, while the time lasts, but remember, after this date, it gets cut off. And put little flyers in all of the places that sell it and do that kind of stuff. Get people talking about it, get people, you know, a little bit excited about FIFA, get a little bit excited about, you know, uh, buying a little bit more for the holidays. You know, keep things lubed up and everything and uh, you know, make sure that the holidays are pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and honestly, very valid point. I'd be curious as to what um, the explorer Nixa.
That's where I was gonna go with that too.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna try to promote people to come to our town during this time period, and then we have a different rule than what the rest of the state has.
You never know.
So we're not actually changing anything with this other than opt out on the FIFA sales. So our current code adopted by our reference speaks to license hours of operation parameters, which are the one thirty AM, the six AM prohibition. So that's being suspended for this period of time that the World Cup is going on. What we're doing with this bill, we are adopting those provisions into our code now, which is what most cities do already. Our code is weird and it does not have any requirements on the sale of alcohol, it's just whatever the state has provided. So the one change this bill does is that. The other thing is opting out, which there are a lot of communities in the city that are doing this. I was copying an email from several municipal lawyers who are in St. Louis region also. Who are looking at opting out of the sound, I don't know, I can't report if they can adopt that or not. And frankly, I don't think from a legal perspective, I mean, I don't have a recommendation or I don't really have a policy in place on this. But just to clarify, the bill doesn't really change anything other than adopt into our code specifically the hours of operation issue. And then op- and then offer the opting out, which is an option we're allowed to do, just the state is changing this on us, you know, this, this term. So I don't have a document, I just want to be clear on what's going on here with the statute. That's what's going on and with the code, because our current code doesn't have anything related to the sale other than what the state has. And so I've mentioned this, this adding that to the code also would give us the authority of the state where you have something on the in the future. That we're consistent on that, which I think is something the council could be looking at as well when you're considering what to do with this. So that, that's the important pieces, we don't have anything right now from the state that's a state that's changing it. And then we're just left with that, and so there's no local control. Is that, is that helpful at all?
Yes, it does. And we'll discuss that here in a second. When I close the visitor's section. Look at me, trying, trying to follow. Alright, uh, visitor's section is still open, so if anyone else would like to speak on this, feel free to do so at this time. Alright, I will close the visitor's section.
So my question to Mr. Woodman on this is, if, if part of this is to codify our ordinance on that, basically put that into policy of the prohibition between one thirty and six. Then can that, we just do that separately instead of trying to combine the two of these? Cause couldn't we do a resolution to opt out of the um, the FIFA if we wanted to do that, or does that have to be an ordinance as well? Okay, so can we, can we separate the two?
If you'd like an amendment to be presented at the next meeting, we can separate this to the FIFA.
I think so. I mean, I don't know. Yeah.
And I could understand why a lot of the cities in that area are probably getting a lot of pushback from businesses. Restaurant owners, bar owners, um, because then that kind of, kind of go back to the, the no smoking. I remember when that all took place and everyone thought every bar was gonna go out of business because they weren't gonna allow smoking there. Well, the bars didn't want to be the ones to tell people that they couldn't smoke in there, so they wanted the government to do it. And this is kind of a same deal, when you have extended hours like that, you're kind of forced to be open. And then if you're not busy, well, you're spending a lot of money to staff a place that's not busy. So I could see them wanting an easy out to be able to just keep their standard business hours. But in the same sense, if a game's running long, they could continue to sell beer. Or you just do what everyone's always done and just go buy some from the store and go watch it somewhere else. That's my thought. It's never been like four o'clock in the morning and I've thought, need more beer. It's time for bed. Anything else from council? Alright, thank you, Mr. Woodman. Alright, moving on, first reading, uh, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight?
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa. Adopting the twenty twenty-six operating and capital budget for the city, presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to present to you the twenty twenty-six operating and capital budget. This is a structurally balanced budget as required by law, meaning that after the revenues, expenses and unencumbered balances have been accounted for, we are in a positive position. We have budgeted nearly seventy-three point six million dollars in revenues and ninety-six point five million dollars in expense. That does not include transfers in and out amongst funds. Highlights of the revenues um, include an increase in, of two percent in sales tax over last year's budgeted numbers. And an increase of sixteen percent in the use tax figures from last year. Um, it also has an increase of seven percent in real estate tax. This is driven entirely by valuation increases and not an increase to citizens' tax payments. We anticipate issuing bonds um, for a few of the wastewater and water projects. Uh, this money is included in the budget under the under, other sources of funds column. Um, in the amounts of twelve point four million for the lift station and sludge holding basin in the wastewater fund. And eight million dollars for the water tower in the water fund. Um, so turning to expenses now on a high level, our personnel costs are totaling nineteen point four million dollars. This allows us to bring all full-time city staff up to the fiftieth percentile. And this is based on the market study that was provided us by C-Biz when we did a salary survey a few years ago. Included in the personnel budget are also increases to our health insurance of nine point one percent and our dental insurance of four percent. And then a slight increase in loggers contribution, um, in the general employees. The city's contribution went from seventeen point three percent of gross wages to seventeen point four percent. And in the police, um, it is going from seventeen point one percent to seventeen point nine percent of gross wages. Operational expenses are also affected by a substantial thirty-seven point, or thirty-seven percent increase in our property and liability insurance premiums. And just a heads up, we will be coming to you with a budget amendment for um, hardware for our computers. Based on um, forward slash recommendations, we just could not get the numbers from them in time to include them in this budget. So we will, we do know, we do anticipate that we will have to be purchasing some more computers for staff. But we just don't know how many and what cost that will be, so we will be coming to you um, with a budget amendment when we have those figures more clearly. clearly. To manage these higher costs, um, I just wanted to point out that every department has made cuts to their budget, um, in a very collaborative effort. We all looked at our budgets and cut what we could, um, many of those cuts being in training and things, things that we could, we could live without. So, um, everybody rallied around and, and, and did their best to make this happen. We have budgeted more than $50 million in capital projects. This is the most the city has ever budgeted. Key initiatives include the ongoing city hall remodel, the new police department, the AMI metering project, the early phases of a new substation, a new water tower, a new water main loop, southwest regional lift station, a new sludge holding basin, Cheyenne multi-use path, the final phase of the Cherry Street Storm Water Project, a downtown parking lot, and further development of the north parcel of the Oath property. That's not an exhaustive list, but those are some of the key projects we've got going for next year. We're going to be very busy, um, in strengthening our infra- infrastructure and continuing to, to grow. And finally, this budget reflects an estimated unrestricted cash balance of $25.5 million. So that's after everything's said and done and restrictions are held back, we will be in the positive $25.5 million. This budget represents months of work and collaboration. We have been working on this since July. And I wanted to, to take a moment to thank all of the city staff for their diligence and expertise for, you know, tracking down numbers and figuring out what's, what's on hand and what we need and, and estimating time for things and, and just really digging in and, and doing a lot of, of hard work. This is a very massive undertaking and it does not happen without teamwork. And so because of the, this commitment, you know, the key decision makers are equipped with the best information to make sound decisions. And so I really appreciate all of the city staff for their work i- in this process. And last but not least, I would like to thank council and the mayor for your guidance and your input, um, and your continued vision for making the City of Nixa a really great place for our citizens and our businesses and our employees. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the budget.
Any questions? And if you want any changes, stay quiet.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You say that, we all laugh, but that's not very funny.
A little too late for that.
Yeah.
All right, I will open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the 2026 operating and capital budget for the City of Nixa, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Last thing I wanna add on this would, um, kinda echo your statements. Thank you very much to the staff. I know I probably drove a lot of you insane, um, but I feel like getting us in a very good financial position whenever cost of everything continues to rise. We don't exactly know what sales tax revenue looks like, um, and then, you know, things going on in the world affects that, our own, I mean, our main revenue considerably. Um, but I've, I've said it to Mr. Lyles and, um, said it to Chief and, um, you know, if something is important next year, I mean, you guys know how I feel about budget amendments. I'm not a huge fan of them. However, I realize that there are important things that were cut out of this budget, um, in every single department. And we don't want to hold up progress in any department, um, especially if it's, you know, the hiring of a, find a really good new police officer that you wanna hire. I don't wanna hold that up. If, if we need to do a budget amendment for that, we're gonna do it. Um, and that goes every department, you know? We should look at all of that and make sure that even when we are running a little lean, we can still spend the extra money that we're saving. Um, it's there for a reason and it's, you know, in a situation where we have to step up and spend upwards to a million dollars to fix an issue in a neighborhood with a sewer line, then I'm glad we have the money to do that. Um, and so that's, to me, that is responsible government and all of you guys are a part of that and you're a huge part of that. I appreciate everything you guys have done and so glad and thank God we're to the end of it.
Until next year.
Tough, tough, tough. Well, we got like seven months.
Yeah.
And then we'll start it all over again. Um, so thank you again. Anything else from council? And thank you, council, for all your help on it. That's, um, it, it's a lot to digest. I think Mr. Ortiz is cross-eyed at some point.
A little bit.
But I appreciate your guys' involvement in it. Okay, nothing else. We will move on to our second readings. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-35?
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-35. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa repealing ordinance number 2409 and authorizing the mayor to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Program Supplement Agreement. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We had a public hearing on this and first reading at the last meeting. Uh, this is a pretty easy one. Uh, we approved this on the October 14th, 2025 meeting and due to a technical glitch, the wrong exhibit ended up getting attached to the document approved by council, so we brought it back with the correct exhibit. Staff recommends approval and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have on this.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. All right, no questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
Somebody?
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Ms. Graham. Roll call, please.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
J. Ortiz?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Or it passes. Next up, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-36?
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-36. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa amending several provisions of Chapter 117 for the purpose of authorizing the use of modular homes in the R1 residential zoning district. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gobby.
Mayor, council, good evening. Um, so I'll try to make this brief, but I'll stumble my through, way through it again. Uh, we are looking to modify our zoning, our reg- residential zoning districts by eliminating the RMHS zoning district, which is for residential modular home subdivision. Uh, again, this is strictly for modular homes, not mobile homes. We have a separate zoning code for those. Um, so again, this just impacts modular homes. Uh, this does impact a variety or a plethora of zoning, or not zoning, but, um, city code? There we go. Um, so we're updating our zoning code to, to make sure that mo- modular homes are allowed in the R1 zoning district. We're updating the definition of modular home. We are updating the, uh, district or removing this specific district from a zoning district but, but still leaving the, um, mobile home one. Uh, we're eliminating the development standards, uh, cause again, if they're going to, um, the single-family zoning district, there's no need to have, uh, the requirement to have a two-acre parcel, uh, as the minimum for a modular home. It should just be allowed on a typical, uh, single-family sized parcel. We're updating the table of approved uses to eliminate that zoning district and to also, uh, move, uh, modular homes to be in approved use in the R1 zoning district. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. Um, staff does recommend approval. Um, to mention a few things that, uh, was left out of the presentation at the first reading, um, there are no current, um, properties zoned for residential modular homes right now, so it's, we're not creating any non-conforming situation. Um, staff was not, uh, approached by anybody looking to do a modular home. This was just something that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked staff to look into to make sure we weren't, um, over-regulating these newer types of construction methods that have been, uh, trending across the country. So, um, during that evaluation, we kinda noticed that this one was an outlier and kind of unnecessary. Um, during the first reading, uh, the, the subject of container homes was brought up. Um, so there's two ways to look at container homes or shipping container homes. The first is if it's coming fully assembled, uh, with everything done to it, windows, uh, everything built out on the inside and it's just being shipped in, dropped on a foundation, um, that is considered a modular home because it is constructed offsite and transported onto site. Now, if you were to bring in, um, just your typical shipping containers and then modify them onsite at that point, um, that would be considered a, a single-family development, uh, your typical single-family development. Obviously, it's using different materials, but that method would be allowed within the R1 zoning district currently. So the City of Nixa does not regulate, um, the aesthetics of a home. So if your neighbor wanted to build a, a tin house, uh, they could, or if they wanted to paint it pink, they could. We, the city does not regulate that now. I will say HOAs, most of the HOA regulations that I have seen do regulate most of the development to stick-built homes, which is your typical, um, standard development type for single-family homes. Um, if this were to be approved, staff does, um, recommend approval. We do see a benefit, um, it could potentially ca- or, um, have home prices decrease or the, at least new construction prices decrease. There will be quicker construction times, um, less impact to the neighbors having, uh, a development or a building go on in between their homes, cause, you know, most of this activity will take place offsite and then come into, so there'd be less mess, uh, less vehicles, less, building inspections need to have come into play because, uh, these modular homes will come with a document stating what the building code that they were built to, so we would have all that on, in hand already. So it would eliminate some of that unnecessary, or not unnecessary, but just that, um, those extra trips out there. So again, staff recommends approval. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have a question. What if someone bought a double-wide mobile home and put it on a foundation, took the wheels off, would that qualify as a modular home in that case?
Uh, it would depend on how it was constructed. So, um, as we're, if you look in the staff report, we are updating the, the definition. So if it comes with, um, so again, for modular home in this definition, it does say, does, uh, does not have its own running gear or chassis, so that would be like the frame that it was transported on. So if they were to remove that, it would come into, does it have the, the seal of the State Public Service Commission, uh, stating what the standards it was built to? Um, so again, mo- mobile homes are constructed to a slightly different standard than what a modular home are.
So how do they move a modular home then? They move it on wheels?
Uh, they put it on like a trailer.
On a trailer, okay.
Or a container or however. It's broken down into modules, so it's easier to transport. Or it is consi- or it could be potentially like a Clayton home is a brand of homes out there that are similar to what you're referencing. It just doesn't have a chassis and wheels tied to it where it could easily be moved at some point.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we all understood the difference between those two things.
Mm-hmm.
I'd still be concerned about that being put in the neighborhood. I don't know why, because they're very, very nice, but...
Again, it could happen right now under the, our current zoning code.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Gobby.
Thank you. Hopefully I didn't stumble too much.
Just enough. All right, no other questions from council. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time.
Scott Jones?
Scott Jones, 194 Shady Oak. Ms. Graham answered. Asked my question for me, um, about mobile home. If you take it off, does that become modular at that point? Um, I think the bigger question for me is, you know, if we've identified, hey, you can't, you can do a container, not, you know, do it tin and everything. Maybe the right question should be not the nicer modular stuff, having some of that. And just because we have it now, should we? Should we be updating what we have now to where maybe we have a little higher standard on some of those things? That's my point. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Sandy Caron, 622 North Maplewood Hills Road, in Samwell Darlene's. My brother actually sells modular housing, so there are some very nice ones, but there are some used ones. And I would be concerned, as a real estate agent, what is it gonna do to the other homes around it? Is it going to reduce? Yes, we need affordable housing, but what is it gonna do to the current housing? So that is something I would ask you all to, to think about. Um, again, we need affordable housing, but is that the answer? So that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Caron.
Ron Sanders, 976 Glen Oaks Drive. Again, um, not to take away from the seriousness of the subject, but what if a modular or a, a mobile home is relocated, you know, via some sort of a natural occurrence and it winds up in our jurisdiction? You know, then what do we do? I mean, I know we're not in Kansas, but it could happen, right? In all seriousness, though, um, we do need to have, um, common sense legislation here that covers, you know, do we want mobile homes here? Do we want modular homes here? Um, where does the comprehensive plan fall that addresses this type of, um, situation as well is what I'd like to know?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right, no one else. I will close the public hearing. Um, yeah, come on up.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, last time I talked to you was pretty rough, so it's good to see you and smile at you.
Likewise.
You guys have been great. I've been watching for a while and the budget thing, that's great. Way to have the buffer and way to be efficient.
Thank you.
That's great work. Um, the question I had was, um, are modular homes gonna be treated like a normal home? Same standard? I'm sorry, that was probably, that was probably something that was addressed previously.
Nope.
So, so a modular home be treated like my house?
Yep.
That sounds reasonable. The other thing I wanted to tell you, World Cup, the why, why they're doing that, in my opinion, I'm a soccer nerd, it's for the, the Germans and the Dutch and the Irish who come in and wanna drink all day.
Yeah.
And, and they're gonna be like Kansas City, you shut the bars down at two, are you kidding me? So yeah, they're, they're preparing for that.
Good call.
Yeah. Thank you for giving me some time. Great to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Does style come into play in the comprehensive plan? And I didn't close the public hearing yet. Hold on one second. Anyone else like to speak before I?
Sir, what was your name?
I'm sorry, Rob Jones.
Rob Jones, sorry. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Gobby, um, I don't remember this part, it could be in there, but does, style, does that come into play in the comprehensive plan? I didn't think it did. It's just...
Thank you for asking about the comprehensive plan. It's one of my favorite topics.
I have nowhere, yeah.
Uh, no, uh, style or, um, aesthetics is not mentioned in the comprehensive plan. What is, is, uh, require, or having the city achieve a more diverse housing, um, options and also affordability. So this, uh, hits a lot of those requirements that are in the comprehensive plan.
I'll say it's pretty amazing when you, cause the, so mobile homes and all that, that's handled completely different when it comes to purchasing and titling. Um, and seeing some of those come through, they are like way more expensive than my first home. It's, it's pretty insane, but they are handled completely differently than a normal home. It's a, it's actually kind of a nightmare as far as paperwork's concerned, but, yeah, they, they are, some of them aren't that affordable anymore. All right, anything further from council? Any questions? Nothing further from council? Um, I will accept a motion.
Somebody?
I'll second.
The first by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Ortiz. Roll call, please.
J. Ortiz?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
No.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
All right, yes, let's have it. Motion carries. All right. Yes, it's habit. Motion carries. All right. Next up, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution 2025-52?
Resolution number 2025-52, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa consenting to the mayor's appointment of several members to the Board of Directors of the Public Building Corporation of the City of Nixa, Missouri. Mayor and council, the PBC is a nonprofit corporation that was created by the city in the eighties to provide a way to finance projects like public buildings and infrastructure. Currently, we have four open seats on the nine-member board, three seats that had expiring terms, and one seat that's open due to a resignation. David Larson and Kyra Horn have both agreed to another six-year term. Ron Sanders has agreed to a six-year term, and Barb Stillings has agreed to fill the vacancy, which has two remaining years on that term. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Coffey. You going to speak on this one? I will now open the visitors section. If anyone would like to speak on why we should or shouldn't appoint any of these people. I'm looking at you, Barb. No. Just kidding. I will close the public hearing. I really appreciate you guys being willing to serve. It is, a lot of times it's difficult to find people to serve on anything. And Stillings, you have served on a lot of things, so. And welcome to the club, Mr. Sanders. I guess. We'll see. All right. Nothing further. I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Ms. Graham with the motion and Mrs. Morris with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Finally get something with my autograph on it. You're welcome.
Freeman.
If you guys can, if you guys await, we'll get you sworn in after the meeting.
All right. Anything else from staff? I'm sure you got some stuff.
I always have something for you. Yeah, I've, know I've reminded you, but your final reminder, mayor's tree lighting is December 5th, which is a week from Friday.
I'll be there.
From five to eight PM. You'll be there?
Yep.
That's very good. It's your, it's your show. And then our Christmas parade, the seventy-first annual, seventy-first annual Christmas parade is Sunday, December the seventh, begins at two o'clock from the community center and follows our normal parade route. So just cross your fingers we have nice weather.
Why'd you say that?
Because you bring rain.
I do bring rain. That is for sure. And storms. Just a couple trashcans, though, right, Cindy?
Then I'll just mention that offices, city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday and Thanksgiving and the day after. And then just a reminder, our next council meeting is December 9th, and it will be only one meeting in December. So just want to remind everybody that day.
Hi, Mr. Coffey. Just haven't had much to say tonight, so I figured I'd let you talk at least once.
As a reminder, candidate filing opens December 9th, 8:00 AM here at City Hall. It'll close December 30th at 5:00 PM. We do have three seats open. Mayor's seat is open, District One's seat, which is Mr. Ortiz's seat, and then District Three, which is Ms. Graham's seat.
Thank you. Can't think of anything else. Mr. Peterson, here you got something to tell us.
I move the city council go into closed session under Section 610-021, 1, 2, 3, and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session, records related there too, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under Section 610-021 of RSMO, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
J. Ortiz?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Thank you all very much and have a very happy Thanksgiving.